September meeting of Marion County Commission. Tonight's invocation is to ask Commissioner Rollins if he would give that to be followed by the place of allegiance.
The last few weeks that we went through as a country have been a rough, actually a week and a half, year or two. So before we pray, I'm going to ask, I'd have a moment of silence on behalf of Charlie Kirk. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, tonight, Lord, as we come in prayer, just as humble as we can tonight. Lord, I'm thankful, Lord, for all that you've done for us. I'm thankful, Lord, for you being with us and taking care of each one of us throughout this week. I pray that you would just continue to hold your hand down upon us. Lord, as we come together tonight, Lord, to take care of the business, I pray that you would give us each one guidance, knowledge, wisdom tonight, Lord, to do what's best for each one in this county. Lord, be with us tonight, Lord. And, Lord, I pray that you'll touch your servants, Lord, be with them. Lord, touch your government, Lord, touch your country. Tonight, Lord, we pray, I pray that you just be with each one, in Jesus' name we pray.
(Inaudible) .......................................................................................
Thank you, Commissioner Rollins, Mr. Chairman. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abbott.
Here.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Blansett.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Cantrell.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Hargit. Mr. Holland. Mr. Mason.
Here.
Chairman Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Nedley. Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting?
Chairman, I have a question for you. The minutes don't reflect the mayor's speech, nor Mrs. Benada's speech that she put out. And I just thought it was important, even though they're ugly towards me, I think, for transparency purposes, that should be reflected in the minutes.
That's duly noted, Mr. Brown. Which we are, we do have documents, we have documentation, we have through video.
I'm not hearing you say.
I'm sorry. I said, "We do have documentation of everything by video, even though it's not reflected directly in the minutes." But that's duly.
Let a motion, Commissioner Brown, to amend the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abbott.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Mr. Blansett.
Yes.
Mr. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Chairman Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Yes, so, so we need to make a motion to approve the minutes. As amended, with, with that addition to the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Rollins. All in favor? Those. Approval of September agenda?
I make a motion.
Mr. Mason with a motion, Mr. Cantrell with a second. All in favor? Those. No public comments. Selection of chairman. We need a motion to appoint a temporary chairman.
Make a motion, Chris Morrison.
We got to appoint a temporary chair.
Temporary?
Yeah.
Make a motion, appoint David.
I'll save it.
All in favor? All in the floor for nominations for chairman?
I nominate Chris Morrison.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great job. Congratulations. Selection of vice chair, open the nominations, I'd like to nominate Don Atkins. All in favor? Those.
Post.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abbott.
Yes.
Mr. Atkins.
Yes.
Mr. Blansett.
Yes.
Mr. Brandt.
No.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Chairman Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Upstain.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion approved. First of all, I thank you for the nomination and the votes, I appreciate your confidence.
Thank you, guys, that's a... I appreciate my short term.
Yes, sir. Agenda item number ten, budget amendments, Marion County Local Government, Mr. Mayor.
Done, sir.
Budget amendments, Marion County Board of Education, Dr. Griffin.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You all tabled, number one, I don't know if you have it printed back before you. Basically, you can see what that is, that's one through five. Additional workers comp premiums, additional property tax, casualty tax insurance premiums, corrections of personnel salary benefits, deduction in state allocation of pre-K, as well as new purchase of a special education bus and increased retirement. There's no increase in maintenance fee. Respectfully, request passage of that, please.
So moved.
Say it today.
Mr. Schaefer, second, by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Those.
Number two is information only, if you would, that's for discussion. Number three, there's a reduction in county property tax revenue, correction to health services hybrid retirement, correction to reg- regular education, one-time teacher bonus and benefits, and increase in transfers to food service and one-time bonus. Respectfully, and that is no increase in maintenance fee. Respectfully, request passage, please.
So moved.
Commissioner Rollins, second, by.
Number four is just information only.
Motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Number five is basically reallocations, better progress. Respectfully, request passage, please.
Motion to approve, number five.
So moved.
Mr. Atkins, second, by Commissioner Rollins, all in favor?
Aye.
Those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to ask Dr. Griffin a quick question.
If you're, you're a code of conduct policy. I saw something related that we're not discriminating for purposes of national orders, so we're somebody of another country. Does that include also other states in the continent of the U.S.?
I would have to defer to the attorney, our board attorney on that, let him review that, but I, I assume that it would include that.
Thank you.
I've double voted on that one, I apologize for that. Past life, so good. Budget amendments, Marion County Highway Department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item thirteen, approval of floodplain resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every so often, we have to revise the floodplain maps. Dave Gergen, Bill Inspector, is our floodplain coordinator. And we sent out a list of properties, all these properties being pulled out of floodplain, not put in the floodplain, also a true hurricane, Mullins Cove Road, Sweden's Cove. This resolution had to approve a famous airplane. We did have a pilot carrying nice Thursday, five o'clock, no one showed up. And we had a couple phone calls at the office, this is for the county, anything inside the cities is handled in the cities. So if there's issues, I will see if there's any direction, one of the city halls, but this is basically airplane in the county.
And nothing was added, only removed.
Nothing was removed, everything was removed, nothing there. Recommend this be approved.
Time motion. Mr. Abbott, second.
Second.
Mr. Atkins, all in favor?
Aye.
Those. Agenda item number fourteen, approval change order for taxiway expansion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Airport committee met last week along with finance committee, just change orders for three hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. This amount come off the original bid, where we're going, we'll bid out the whole job, eleven hundred fifty-foot taxiway. When the bids come in, we took this off, cut the taxiway back to eight fifty. And both committees recommend we do this change order, they did have a couple questions. On line A one, it talks about the contract quality and control plan, twenty-five thousand dollars, that's federal requirement, they have to do that. And then the other one that was questioned was the twenty-five thousand dollar mobilization. Under federal law, they only charge ten percent on mobilization, dismobilization, that's where they have some of their overhead and some of the profit figured in. Also, working with multiple stores, Tussie Ironautics, ninety-five percent chance we won't get ninety percent of this money back in our next round of money. So it basically costs us about ten percent, about thirty-two thousand dollars. And this will also allow us to have about three or four hangars of what we have, just they aren't fifty-four, if we do the full. So I recommend we do this change order.
Questions, entertain motions. Mr. Rollins, second. Mr. Thompson, all in favor?
Aye.
Those. Agenda item number fifteen, approval of DC upholders for outfitting to new patrol vehicles.
This was, this was put out the bid, we'll receive one bid, we have three, excuse me, three companies that sent requested a bid package that we sent to, we'll receive one bid back, and it's from DC upholders, amount of twenty thousand, forty-one dollars and thirty-two cents.
For two vehicles.
Two vehicles.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I got a problem with two cup holders costing almost ninety thousand dollars for what they never did. Or is it nine, yeah.
Yeah.
Cup holders, uh, no, ninety-one dollars, I'm sorry.
I said we're getting cup holders and not going to be anything else.
Sorry.
Call me.
My motion, motion approved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those.
Mr. Carrick, ask, uh, snow here.
Yes. Chair.
Back here. When, when we retire, when we retire a vehicle, is there anything, any of this stuff that we salvage out of it, or?
I've got stacked out here, the bad thing about it is when you change vehicles, you can't use it on another vehicle. I've got a whole set of lots of Crown Bikes, and when they quit making Crown Bikes, I couldn't even get them away.
Well, file a grievance, you get it forward.
It's good, I've got a Crown B, it's the best car they ever made.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item number sixteen, David Riley, voter list maintenance update.
Some three of y'all roll your eyes, I'm not going to take that personally. I'm going to stick to my prepared comments, so I don't stay up here all day long. Every odd year, Marion County Election Commission, MZEC, going forward, office staff does what I'm going to call intensive voter list maintenance pursuant to state statute, mostly covered in DCA two-one-one oh six, two-one-one oh seven, two-two-one-twenty-two, two-two-one-twenty-seven, two-six-two-oh-one, for all of you struggling with insomnia. Reason I'm emphasizing what I call it is because we're always doing list maintenance to some degree. For instance, when we don't leave somebody on the voter list, when we receive a death notification into our form, formal list maintenance period, we are sending and receiving what we call cancellation notices to and from other county-level election offices nationwide to avoid a voter being registered in two different locales at the same time. These are just a couple of examples of ongoing maintenance efforts. Returning to the intensive voter maintenance process, I wanted to once again dispense with the rumor that we remove or purge, to use legislative language, a voter in Tennessee quote, "If you skip a presidential election." Using myself as an example, David Riley registers to vote in September of 2025. I don't vote in 26, I don't vote in 28. In 29, MZEC will send me a confirmation card to the residential address, I might vote a registration card. If I complete that and send it back to MZEC, eureka, nothing happens, I get a reset, essentially. But let's assume that MZEC simply doesn't get that card back, David Riley is marked as inactive, not purged, he's marked as inactive, he is still on the voter list. If I show up in May of thirty, or even August of thirty-two to vote, I will have to vote fail-safe, but all my information will still be available, and I'll be allowed to vote on the machines, just like everyone else, and again, I'll be reset. But again, let's assume I'm completely absent for all of thirty and thirty-two, so for eight years... I decided not to participate in one election and did not respond to one piece of mail. But yes, the deciding factor is indeed the November general election. Yes, I would then be purged from the voter rolls in 2033. So the office is not arbitrarily mixing people off the rolls after one election. Now, some variables on this might include us receiving a national change of address notification from the post office, which would still require a returned piece of mail after we received that. An obituary in a newspaper, general circulation, or licensed funeral home website, not just a general website, it would have to be a licensed funeral home. In more contemporary news, as a side effect of this year's voter list maintenance, we had another revelation come to our attention that has caused quite a stir. I'll let you all grab one and pass it on down. Because this has been reported in about twenty different ways. Let me emphasize moving forward in this chapter, Marion County Administrator of Elections, the Marion County Election Board of Commissioners, the State Election Board of Commissioners, the State Commissioner of Elections, Tennessee Division of Elections, does not move anybody from one district to another. We do not have the authority to draw or redraw district lines. That determination, as you've undoubtedly extrapolated from the news, is a legislative activity. Hence, if you've got misgivings on how the county district map is drawn, you are likely not going to enjoy the map I draw you to the complaint department for that. But on the bright side, it'd be a really, really, really hard to get lost, starting from where I stand. But as my position might suggest, administrator of election does lend itself to the administration of those final decisions. As it was discovered that a portion of the Jasper Highlands development, known as the farms, was misadicated in County District Three within the voter database, when in fact, the residences were in District Four. The dramatic oversimplification for this is whereas the previous phases of the development were serviced by driveway postal book mailboxes, the farms, a significant portion of which was mapped after redistricting maps were printed in 2022, which is the first map that you're looking at, were serviced by cluster mailboxes that were serviced by Jasper Post Office, and our office took the template in stride without scrutinizing the physical placement of the actual domiciles, which you'll see on the second map, was conveniently located in District Four. Bad news, mistakes were made, for that I apologize. Shortcomings of the process to this point, if you're looking for somebody to blame, you're looking at him. I will offer that over the last five years, my predecessors were dealing with COVID and its after effects, the 2020 and the 2024 presidential elections, that if you didn't think they were having fun with that, I'd like to suggest that they were. And that we have one of the cleanest counties in the state, and the, you need, you need to be proud. Let me go back to my prepared remarks. And our office staff, our elec- our election commission, uh, deserve to be acknowledged for the work they did, and that includes, because I don't want to leave this out, a single eleven-hour precinct audit, just in case you thought your meetings ran long. All they had to say, they left me and the staff with clean slate to work with and do some deep dives and further improve our processes. This is part of it. Whereas the cluster boxes are a portion of the issue, the redistricting lines play a part, and there are going to be other tweaks throughout the county. There were about two hundred and fourteen total registered voters affected by this segment, some of which have been registered since these elections. I want to emphasize, even for, if you go back to the primary in whatever we're, 2022, it was not a deciding factor, we didn't have enough people to decide any elections at that time. I did go back and check, so you can rest easy on that. Whereas I'm still making sure of the specificity of the remaining question marks throughout the county, I expect that number is not going to exceed seventy-seven. Those are my question marks that are left, and they're scattered throughout the county. Reasonable question would be, okay, assuming we give the office a mulligan on this one, what keeps this from happening moving forward? Since we're looking at redistricting in five years, we've got developments springing up all over the place, glad you asked. Everyone in the election office now has access to what I'm going to call live-ask Controller's Office Portal, that we are using to reference each new voter registration. This map portal is helping us overlay our existing county districts with our precinct lines, and it allows us to put in the address as we go, and it is, for instance, developer puts in a permit, controller has that on their portal, and so we're able to see that within ten days. So, uh, is it perfect? No, but it's a lot better than what we have. So, uh, and that's everybody in the office, so that's not just a select few of us. Also been fortunate in getting almost instant response from developers when I had specific questions, obviously that's less specific, but it helps lift headaches off of them too, so behooves us to clear each other's plates with good information, so I'm optimistic that that'll do nothing but improve. Also, I'm losing weight, so you'll see my not-quite-fat self walking around making sure that we've got our new constructions square in the real world reflected in the computer as well. I'd like to close by saying, the office is made up of people. I will never be able to say with a straight face that there is going to be an omission of error. What I can promise is there's an omission of balance. I have faith that the people that make up the staff, and part of the appeal is, we do disagree. We keep each other square. We push each other respectfully to a solution that benefits our neighbors. And if there comes a time where I find there, there's a purposeful madness, the staff will change. I suspect the change, the moment the election commission sees madness on my behalf, I suspect you'll see a new administrator. But I will continue to aspire to improve the office's integrity, accuracy, and efficiency as long as I'm part of it. Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Rollins, question?
Mr. Abbott, I want to thank you. We had a disagreement, and I came into your office, we sat down and resolved the issue, I gave you some information that you were not privy to, which helped you come up with the reasons why certain things happen, and I applaud you for sitting down there and listening, and we worked together to resolve the problem and complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Approval of no worries.
Tucker D. Abbott, Stan Henry, Holly D. Hood, Gary D. Lowly, Morgan Lawson, Nicole Ledbetter, Conya May, Lydia S. Sergeant, Tony E. Smart, Terry R. Thomas.
Entertain motion to approve, Commissioner Campbell, second. Commissioner Cantrell, all in favor?
Aye.
Those.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain. I want to make it clear, Tucker D. Abbott is my son, he does receive compensation from me for work done, and Stan Henry, he works with me at the bank, that's Tower Community Bank, where we work together, so I just want to clarify that, but I abstain.
You lead up with, Mr. Abbott. General business. Go ahead.
Mayor, I'd like to get an update on the 041 water project. And the South Pittsburgh Mountain project, what's going on with either of both of those projects? It doesn't seem like we're doing anything with them. We're not getting anything done. I'd like to know what the holdup is. And another thing too, is this going to cost us any extra money because we're being delayed, for whatever reason, and you'll explain it to us later. And if I think anything else while you're giving that explanation, I'll ask you.
As I stated, Stan Tech is doing engineering on Highway Forty-One, and when they get that completed, we'll meet with the contractor and see if it's going to be an extra cost or not. Once that, once that, they start on that project, then the permit for South Pittsburgh Mountain will be reissued.
So. Yeah, I know we were having trouble with T-Dot meeting some of their standards. You don't have, I know you don't have any idea about how much money we're talking about until the engineers get to that. So I've got a lot of people that got a lot, not a lot of people, but constituents are calling, asking why they get good water on South Pittsburgh Mountain. We had, at one time, we put in three filling stations, and now they're down to one because people didn't want to turn around in front of their houses and fill it up with tankers and stuff. So had to take that one out. We had another one, which somebody bought the property it was sitting on, so we had to take it out. So if we can get an update every time that, you know, you find something new or something, I'd like for us to be able to have that same information that you're getting. And that's all I've got to say.
Mister Chairman.
On the minutes from last month, I have twelve, I don't know if this is the same one with you, the water, where Commissioner Grant requested that, made a motion to establish a committee with one commissioner from each district who can assist the mayor determining who is ultimately responsible with those decisions. Has the committee been formed?
Committee of forms will come out next month.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Uh, sir.
Question I have related to the water project, the American Rescue Act. It is more fitting for the county mayor, or excuse me, the council, county council. Should we not fulfill the terms of the contract? Is it possible that the seven million dollars or thereabouts could the taxpayer be paying that back?
You're talking about the contract, Mr. Brand, for the receipt of the funds or some, or the contract with the construction side of it?
Actually, the amount of money that we got from the federal government.
Yeah, the basic rule on the American Rescue Plan or ARP funds was that they had to be expended for approved projects. I believe the deadline is September of 2026, is that correct? So we still have roughly a year to expend the funds. So I think, I don't think having to spend extra funds, if that became a reality, would be an issue. I do think if projects are not completed and the funds are not spent, then I think it's possible that the county could have to pay back a portion of, or if not all. But I think some of the funds that have been spent, I defer to the mayor on that part of it. But I think the only legal risk to the county would be if funds remain unexpended a year from now. I think you're under risk of forfeiting those funds and having to return them.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Mister, go ahead, Commissioner Mason.
Okay, on the forty-one water project, what utility district is that?
South Pittsburgh.
On Highway Forty-One?
You're talking about Forty-One, but Highway Two, Highway Two.
Okay, you're talking about Abone.
Val Creek. Val Creek, Val Creek.
It's like South Pittsburgh.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on the Seporti, or the South Pittsburgh Mountain.
South Pittsburgh.
Where is that anywhere near complete?
Not started yet.
So regardless, it is going to be done?
Yes.
Though we just don't know when?
Well.
Is T-Dot the problem, that they're not going to let us do that one?
Let me go back. The problem was, we hired Robert Stegal, who was the engineer for C.S. South Pittsburgh. When we were doing Valley Creek, Sweden's Cove, the South Pittsburgh Mountain, Mr. Stegal sold to Hussey Gate Bell out in Nashville. They put Just a Roman Net on this. He put those three jobs out, which one of them didn't have to have T-Dot approval. Or which one was that? That'd be Sweden's Cove. He did not have any permits in place when those jobs were put out to be. When we start, when we manned on South Pittsburgh Mountain with the green, green construction, guys' names were green, so, but anyway, when we manned out there, then we come to find out there's ten places that have private easements from them. Because T-Dot said, you can't be on T-Dot right away. So the lack of Hussey Gate Bell and Just a Roman Net doing their jobs is the reason we're at today. They were ready to go to construction on South Pittsburgh Mountain.
And we had them under contract as the engineers. And what you're telling us is that they didn't do their job.
That's correct. I'll, you know, and Commissioner Mason, you're aware of this, isn't he? When you've done jobs in South Pittsburgh, before they were put out to be, you had all your permits in place. T-Dot, T-Day, whoever you had to deal with.
Better have them.
Exactly. Well, he didn't. Now I understand he's no longer with that firm.
I think he was here at one meeting here to address what you were talking about. And I, I don't know, he didn't say anything or whatever, so he was here to talk about the engineering thing. But the thing about it is, it's also the owner of whoever's doing the project, it's their job to look after, make sure that they have the permits, the plans, and the contractor is following the plans. And if he does something that's not on the plan, then that, that has to take a change order to make that right, change. And we didn't.
Number of jobs, as number of jobs I've been involved in over the years, Campbell here, all contractors always had permits in place, never had to ask anything.
I'm not talking about permits, I'm saying if they changed something on the drawings, that.
If you didn't change the cost, you wouldn't have to have. Change them.
If you change anything on the plans that's going to cost more money or cause a problem, then you've got to have a change.
Yeah, that's correct.
And we didn't issue no changes.
I guess the question I would have, so is it fair to say that really SR2 and having a water line put in against T-Dot policy and against their guidance had nothing to do with the slowdown in this project?
It does.
You're saying it's the engineers who are at fault because they didn't get the permits ahead of time?
That's correct.
And as I understand it, the T-Dot letter, or the amount of money that they're estimating it will cost us to fix that, is it two hundred and, we'll just say two hundred thousand dollars, is that about right?
I've not seen that letter.
About two hundred and twelve, that, and I've seen it.
Thank you.
Was the engineer paid any monies?
Yes, sir.
Did he get it back?
No, sir.
Commissioner Frankel. Go ahead.
I believe Commissioner Mason had asked at last meeting that the utility managers be, managers be part of the committee that we agreed on to help the mayor with this issue. And I'm hoping that will be done. So that would be Mayor Turner, and it would be Keith Garth, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are they the utility managers?
I'm not certain if, is Mayor Turner the manager?
Mayor Turner is the water administrator.
We don't have a problem with Jasper line, do we? Or not. There's nothing wrong with those, whatever they had, they got done.
With the exception of Egypt Pollard is a problem.
Yeah, well, yeah, it is.
It is a huge problem.
And when you're saying it's a problem, meaning that there's no water in it, that we put infrastructure in the ground with no water in it, or what is the problem?
Well, one, one reason, it's on the other side of the interstate from where Jasper had the water lines. And back before, we'd looked at getting water from Sand Mountain, and they were going to serve that little area right there in that, in that spot right before you get to the county, the state line, on the right-hand side, that's Egypt Pollard. I don't know what plans were, I haven't seen any plans to know where they were going to take the water, get the water from Jasper.
Coming from.
It's connected to Dayton County.
But Jasper was never involved in any of it.
Well, I don't think they had pressure, enough pressure to push water over to that part. I don't think that might have been the problem, not saying that for sure.
But we can't, I mean, the Jasper can't accept those lines.
That's right.
Mister Gaggar, as far as South Pittsburgh Mountain is concerned, so we can hit the ground running when this issue with SR2 is resolved, do you have all the easements that are needed so that we can go forward?
I believe we do now, yes, sir. There was one that was, wasn't really held up, but there was an ownership change that was in process, and that's been completed now. So that was the one, actually I think it was twelve, oh, but I think there were multiple easements from the same property owner. So there was property owners, there were parcels that were made crossed by the proposed water line. So my understanding.
So in theory, once this issue gets resolved, we should be able to get this done in relatively short order?
I think so.
Thank you. Commissioner Frankel.
Oh. Well, I must say on the water line, since it was brought up for a minute, Egypt Pollard was out there and been discussed for a long time now. And me talking to, or Council, talking to a lawyer, I thought Jasper had like two or three recommendations on somehow to possibly get water to Egypt Pollard. And if there's no other source or way to do this, I would like to pursue that and say, hey, what are they, and if there is another way, if there's another way, then we follow up on that to get this water to Egypt Pollard. Now, am I correct on that, or am I wrong?
Mister Frankel, there are, I, excuse me, with, with Mayor Turner and with Mark Ranger, your attorney, a couple of times at the request of the county mayor. And there are some options that are available, one of which, and I'm not sure why, why it wasn't addressed on the front end, or why it wasn't known on the front end. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but, but as it turns out, Jasper does have an existing water line on the, in the south side of the interstate, same side of Egypt Pollard's new system is located on. But it's a, I don't know, distance-wise, probably less than a mile distance from where their line, current line and service ends to where it would need to tie into the Egypt Pollard system. So there would need to be a line extension done in order for Jasper to provide water to the new Egypt Pollard system as opposed to coming from Dayton County. You know, some of the things that have to be looked at there are tap fees for the residents there. If the tap fees are, are too high, frankly, then all those people aren't going to sign up for water. Again, that's not a reflection on Jasper or Dayton County or anybody else. It's just a reality that the majority of those people are dealing with financially. They're not in a position to be able to pay, most of them are below water income, if it's not below the poverty level. It's just a reality for that particular area of the county. And so that, that's an issue that needs to be examined to some degree to see if there's some, some way to either, either find a way to lower that or allow them to pay their installments, you know. There's several options that are out there that we talked about, but it is a reality for those folks to have to do. And whether the water comes from Dayton County or, or from the town of Jasper, there has to be someone to maintain that system going forward, service it, read the meters to maintain it, so forth. And Jasper's not going to do it, doesn't want to do it, or of course, if it can't do it, that's, that's their call at the end of the day. But, but that's still an issue that needs to be resolved, but there are some options available. There is a property owner that has expressed some reluctance in allowing Jasper to extend the line across her property. I'm not, I'm not saying that can't be addressed and some resolution reached. But as it stands right now, that is an issue too that would have to be dealt with. Conceivably, if you go around that property owner, that would add additional cost to it.
Well, and again, and we'll be talking later on this, and I would like to ask for, if you would not, if you wouldn't mind submitting the different options that have been discussed with Jasper to all commissioners, if possible, before our next meeting, so that we can look at these before we come in and understand maybe what we're looking at. We've got over a million dollars in line setting there. That's been setting for what, a year and a half, two years now? That's bad. I mean, I just can't accept that. And, and I'm going to go so far as to say, we need to see what the cost would be if there was an alternative, as when we look at that or not, to say, I know it would add to the cost, but that's better than a plate just sitting there in the ground here.
I'll be glad to do that, Mister Frankel.
Mister Gaggar, as well, the, I would have assumed before you put infrastructure into the ground that's costly to the taxpayer, that Jasper, this, this would have already been ironed out only before it ever got installed. Is it because of depreciation on the line, or?
That, that's one of the factors that, that's important to the town. And one of the options that was discussed about depreciation is leaving ownership of the lines in the county's name until the lines are depreciated because county systems are different, county governments as opposed to municipal governments under Tennessee state laws. So the impact of the depreciation is not the same for the county as it would be for the town of Jasper. So that, that's another one of the issues that Commissioner Frankel is basically commenting on as a workaround in order to, to make it work between the county and the town of Jasper. It would be the same if it was a system that the South Pittsburgh Water Utility was taking over. They would also have depreciation on it, whatever they take on. That, that would be different than the depreciation component for the county's finances.
Am I wrong in saying that Mayor Turner was not advised that this line was going to go there? Because obviously, he seems like a very astute man. So who made the decision of putting that water line there? Because apparently Jasper wasn't involved.
You guys did. Y'all voted. It was presented, this, women, it was presented to the county commission.
When?
Then we all voted for it.
When?
Back a year and a half, two years ago, yeah. Fifteen commissioners voted to put it in. Mayor Turner stood up right back there and said that they would take both lines, both systems over.
That's right.
I think the bigger question is originally, originally, who decided where all these water lines went?
The engineers decided where to go.
You all. No, I thought you just said that the Jasper Turner, or Jasper Mayor did.
He stood up saying that they would take them over if y'all put them in. You all voted to put the Egypt Pollard line in. All we did was present it, draw it, presented the cost, you all voted for it.
That's right.
So were the utility managers in?
It was not.
Either utility managers, were they involved with deciding where these lines?
It was connected to Dayton County.
The way that works, Rurik, is they have to decide if they want to do the line or not. All we proposed was putting the line wherever they wanted. The managers with those gas company and the boards they have over, they have to say, yeah, we'll, we'll do that or we won't. We just offered them the money, because it was a money that was coming from a grant.
I'm assuming that they were part of this conversation, Keith Garth and Jasper.
On the front end, they were, and after that, I don't know what happened about the Egypt Pollard. I wasn't involved.
Nobody was involved, and there's none of those managers, nobody's involved. Engineer laid it out, met specs the Dayton County morning when it connected Dayton County. The line was putting. And the line was put in.
When was the committee put together first to determine the needs analysis as to where the water line should go?
You're not gonna put any water anywhere that the cities don't want to put it.
No, I'm, I'm talking in the county, Mr. Mason.
Well, we don't have any utility. All we did was offer them the money to put the line in, wherever they, they have to make the decision where they can do it or they can't.
Let's move on. Any, any more else?
Yes, I might.
Go ahead, Mr. Franklin, I'm sorry.
On the committees, I would like for us, if we could, to get these committees formed within the couple of weeks, so we know who's on what committees.
Has to be approved of the county commissions, it'll be locked, I'll make, Commissioner Franklin.
It has to be approved. Okay. Along with that, then, when we do have the meetings, uh, I would like for the chair of each community and the vice chair to be added to the form, the, the papers that are gave to us, so we know who the chairman and vice chairman.
And, of course, that'd be after the committees are formed and they had to meet and select that committee.
Mr. Robb?
Can we have this out of room for a minute?
Yes, sir.
So Mayor Jackson, I, I just need to find out myself, I need a timeline for me to answer a couple of questions I've had. So first off, my understanding is we're held up until 41 gets completed before anything else can start with TDOT, right? So when, when do you, when do you think, or when has someone said that resolution's gonna be completed?
David Vowles is there about town on vacation last week, just got back to the office today. I've not had a chance to talk to him, my wife's in the hospital, so I've not had a opportunity to talk to him, so I can't answer that.
So, so, so do we think we'll talk to him a couple of weeks, or?
I, I can't answer it till I talk to him. Soon as we can. I'm not gonna tell you, it's gonna be next week, next, for two months, because I've not, by sudden, I had a chance to talk to him, since he got back in office.
Well, it, it, it's gotta be sooner than two months.
But I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just.
And, and the second thing is on the South Pittsburgh Water Mountain project, um, you won't know until you talk with David again about it?
It's ready to go.
For a timeline, so?
It's ready to go. So, so, again, uh, uh, equipment on site, Highway two, they've already issued that permit, and it's, it's ready to be got. So just as soon as they get, not completed, just as soon as they start work on the other one, we can start. That's what TDOT is. Yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, again, what we've talked about is, this is money we wanted to help our county with, infrastructure, and we want to move on. Now, for some odd reason, there's been personality conflicts and issues throughout, and, and you know, that's water on the bridge. Let's move on, because all we're doing is hurting our citizens, our county not having water.
That's right.
Now, as to the question of depreciation, surely we can figure out something to help out, get that figured out. I, I mean, ideas of that the county needs to loan someone money at zero percent to get the depreciation done, maybe not. But there's, there's, we've got enough brain power here, we should be able to figure that out and get that done. And, and I'm challenging all of us to find a resolution, if it costs us more, and we gotta wait two years to get this done, there's no, let's, let's pay it. We gotta move on. We've got too much money in that ground that doesn't need to be complete. And thank goodness, I'm, I'm proud of, I guess, the one out of the five projects that are done, that's Swinens Cove, um, so hopefully, well, Mullins Cove is it done, I guess, so. Yeah, so, excuse me, we've just got three left, and it'd be nice to, to check those things off. It'd be less headache on all of us. And it's really not a headache, it's just a standpoint, it's just, just going on and on, so.
And the citizens of Marion County, they got the new water, but it's appreciated.
Yeah. But, and, and the whole thing is, is that, I get, what do we do for our county citizens? Well, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to be progressive, understand what needs are in our county, and we get those things taken care of. The water project was one of the most progressive things we thought of. When Chattanooga State went in, it was wonderful. We could educate our children here at home. Now, let's move on, let's get the water projects done. There's not, not pointing any fingers anywhere, because you know, when I point, at one of you guys, I'm pointing at myself. So let's just move forward to get this thing taken care of. And I, I know Mayor Jackson has been back and forth trying to get this done, you're trying to do the best you can a lot of times, you're waiting on someone else's answer, you're trying to get this back. But I would greatly appreciate if we have a timeline and we can say, hey, this is what we're doing, and this is when this is gonna be underway. And if it gets complete in six months, it does, or if it gets complete less than that. But at least we know those things are going on, so.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the action item right now is a timeline? Is, is, that's what I'm hearing, we'll get a timeline back through the mayor to at least give us some dates that we can, we can leave it.
I see no problem with, if, if he's got a timeline, give it to us. But he's gotta have one to give it to us, you know? Anything else? Entertained motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Peggy Thompson? Seconded by Donald Blenson? All in favor? Close.